In my opinion, the trustees today have sent a clear signal to the Jewish community that we will protect them from antisemitism.
That's the voice of school trustee Dr. Neely Kaplan-Mirth on Tuesday after she and her peers on the Ottawa Carlton District School Board voted to censure one of their own colleagues for breaching four rules in the Code of Conduct and ordered that trustee Donna Blackburn to take mandatory antisemitism training. Kaplan-Mirth and other Jewish leaders in Ottawa say they're actually quite surprised at the board's decision. It's long been perceived as ignoring systemic anti-Jewish discrimination and antisemitism. So even though the vote wasn't unanimous and the board stopped short of suspending Blackburn for a few months, which has happened to other councillors, including Blackburn, who was suspended a few years earlier for anti-black racism, in the end, the board voted to reject the recommendations from an outside integrity commissioner who found no sanctions were needed because Blackburn may have made offensive remarks, but they weren't discriminatory, and she'd made them due to, quote, "an error in judgment in good faith," unquote. At issue were some comments and texts Blackburn sent to Jewish people and the board and to staff and even to a community member. Here's one: "Your cries of antisemitism are getting really tired." Here's another: "The fact that I live in daily fear matters not. What matters is the power of the Jewish community, as it always does. I look forward to the day you understand that," with four exclamation marks. There were other comments, too, that upset Kaplan-Mirth and the Jewish community, and it was all part of a dispute in the summer over whether the school board should participate in the Capitol Pride Parade. Eventually, the board purled out of the event when organizers openly supported the Palestinian cause. Some Jewish leaders said the anti-Israel tone of the parade made it unsafe for Zionists to participate. But Blackburn, who is gay, has been an early supporter of the first Pride parades in the 80s and felt the board was wrong to stay away this year. She did apologize for her comments, but the complaint went ahead.
I heartily agree with trustee Lyra that we should take a restorative justice approach and that the goal of this is to ensure that there is no longer antisemitism amongst our ranks or in our community.
I'm Ellen Besner, and this is what Jewish Canada sounds like for Thursday, November 28th, 2024. Welcome to the CJN Daily, a podcast of the Canadian Jewish news and made possible in part thanks to the generous support of the Ira Gluskin and Maxine Grunoffsky-Gluskin Charitable Foundation.
In Berlin, rumors are spreading.
Holocaust victims, their bodies are just dug up.
It's a shunda.
But the truth is even more unnerving.
Was your family in the Shoah?
Dude looked like he was in the Shoah.
As the world panics.
This is ritual, bringing the dead back to life.
What? No, you said this wasn't illegal.
It isn't, I don't think.
One woman seeks the truth.
These are questions you can't answer.
And you're too afraid to even ask them.
Justice: A Holocaust Zombie Story, an original audio drama from the CJN in association with the Ashkenaz Foundation. Listen now at thecjn.ca/zombies or wherever you get your podcasts.
This was trustee Blackburn's sixth tangle with racism or with poor behavior since she was elected to the board 14 years ago. Nevertheless, this week's vote to censure her and order her to take antisemitism training is being hailed as a positive development because it comes after a turbulent few months where Jewish students in Ottawa public schools who support Israel have been bullied, after Remembrance Day events at Sir Robert Borden High School made headlines because an Arabic song was played as part of the show instead of the standard music required by the Royal Canadian Legion. The song's been associated with the Palestinians in Gaza, and that upset some Jewish students at the school. The whole thing now is under investigation by the board. On today's episode, we'll explore what students and their families have been experiencing, starting with 16-year-old Ariel Podolsky and his twin brother Ethan Podolsky, their co-presidents of the Jewish Students' Club at Sir Robert Borden, traditionally which has the largest population of Jewish students in the city. They also both sit on the regular student council, and Ethan was among the Jewish students who objected to the music being part of the Remembrance Day event. And they join me now. Welcome to the CJN Daily.
Thank you for having us.
Can we just talk a little bit about what it's been like in recent weeks for you at Sir Robert Borden as a Jewish student?
Um, it's not, it's not so bad. We have support from several teachers. For example, even just today, even in the past couple of days, because it's Holocaust Education Month, a teacher, Kenra Maros, organized on very short notice in a small educative activity that was done in all high school classes, survivor video and a small discussion. So we have support from, from a lot of the teachers at school, even not all of them. Some teachers are not, not as supportive, don't really care as much. I was actually able to go around and, and pop in on classes to see how they were doing it. And I know some teachers were participating. For example, the class I actually had that afternoon held a long 45-minute discussion on the activity, but I noticed that some other classes, after they were done watching the video, they decided, we're going to go back and do our work that we have to do for the school. So I would say it's a very mixed bag for what we have at SRB. Itan, do you have anything to add to that?
I agree with what my brother said. I feel as if there's, and it's always kind of felt this way, there's a little bit of animosity and sort of between like the Jew, the Jews and the Arab population, but there's always been that tension there. And then especially after, like, we called them out, we called it the, like, the song at the assembly out, um, they kinda, they were like, yo, what's, what's up with that? Like, just because it's Arabic. And although I still feel very strongly that it makes no sense and it shouldn't have been played at the assembly, it has only done to increase the tension and make them speak out more that they, that they think we hate them and that they, like, we are racist towards them. But that always just comes across as them being antisemitic.
Did either of you attend the Remembrance Day ceremonies? I know there were more than one.
So I unfortunately was actually not able to be present. I was on, in New Jersey on the JSU President's Conference. So I heard about this assembly just moments after it occurred. My brother was present, so he can give you the full scoop.
So I'm in the band, so I was present for all three repeats of the assembly because they do it for sections of the school. And it was, like, astonishing. It was, it felt so weird that, I mean, Remembrance Day and suddenly I hear Arabic. And then I saw one of the, the teachers in the, like, the auditorium, in the stands, and I saw her, like, singing along to the song. And I was like, um, and then after, we went, I'm sure you heard, we went to the, the principal, me and six Jewish students, we proceeded to, like, sort of attack his choice to permit the, the song to be played at the assembly. And he proceeded to defend his decision, which, uh, he said, like, no, it's, it's to, there was the quote in the news, and he was like, no, it promotes diversity and it's fine. And then only after, when he was pressed and sort of put in the spotlight, did he rescind his decision.
Wait, wait, go back a second. You were there. So did he say something like, it's usually about white dudes who are from Canada? Those are the words he said?
I was the one who asked him the question that prompted him to say that. Yeah, yeah. That was 100% said, no doubt.
So it's going to be investigated by, or it is being under investigation by the Ottawa Carlton District School Board. Have they come to any conclusion that you've heard of yet? Or is anything done?
I haven't heard anything. Um, he's been back at school every day, the principal, Aaron Hobbs. Seems as if nothing changed. I don't know. I haven't spoken to him since. I don't feel obliged to.
Have you had any further clashes or interactions with pro-Palestinian students who say it's a peace song, like Havanagila? Why are you making such a big racist thing about it?
Um, so personally, I don't really interact with those people. I wouldn't have anyway. Uh, you do see it on Instagram, right after the incident, when people were posting on their stories against Mr. Hobbs. And there were some people who were like, no, it's like, it's just a song. Like, what are they doing? They're attacking our language now. Uh, like, you're not allowed to play Arabic. Uh, but in person, I had not had any confrontation about it.
Do you know, anybody who wrote, um, we saw pictures on the social media and the news, people, there was graffiti, Hamas High on the high school sign. Did you guys, you're aware of that? Who put that there, you know?
I, we have no idea. Yeah. I did want to add, though, that though there weren't, like, Palestinians per se showing, coming up to me and saying it was a peace song, when I returned and had a discussion with a couple of people I knew about it after I came back from my trip, I did hear several people saying, oh, it's just a song. And these weren't Palestinians or any, these were white people and whatever, non-involved people saying, it's just a song and whatever. And clearly, there is just a lack of education because whether or not you believe it's an issue with Judaism, it's simply disrespectful to Canadian veterans. And so I don't know where, where that thought process really came from, but I did hear a little bit of that.
So how do you go forward now, as there have been Palestinian walkouts, uh, very few, but there were afterwards and this whole incident? How do you cope with this? What are you guys doing?
So personally, I mean, as I said, I don't see any confrontation. Uh, one of the primary reasons I was so willing to speak out against this is because I'm in senior year and I knew the consequences for my actions were far fewer. So I know I'm leaving. Personally, up till now, I, nothing too much has changed. So hopefully I can just continue on. But we'll see, we'll see what the result of that investigation is. We'll see if people start to change their minds.
I know that there's a survey that went, um, out to Jewish students from the JPOZA Group, Jewish Parents Association. Did these numbers make sense to you, Ariel and Ethan? They said 70% of the students who responded to the survey don't feel safe showing their identity as Jews at school. And 60% have either been a witness or a victim to an antisemitic incident at school.
Presumably, that's not just SRB. Um, I definitely understand that. I definitely, like, I know who the Jews are at school. And if you just walked in as a random person, you would see, really, so my brother wears a Magen David. I choose not to simply because I don't like necklaces. So if you walked in, you really wouldn't see even that I was Jewish. You wouldn't see that most people are Jewish. You see the occasional Chai or Magen David, but most people don't particularly present themselves as Jewish. We don't have any Orthodox Jewish people at SRB. So there's no one who you can see right away, oh, seat, seat, and whatever, okay, they're Jewish. I don't know at SRB if it's really a hiding thing or simply like, there isn't, like, for example, most people know I'm Jewish. I don't really feel the need that I need to, like, keep my head down. Oh, I need to, if I was wearing a chai, I need to put it in my shirt or anything. But it's definitely not like an outspoken population with the Jews.
Do you have to hide the location of your club and your events on social media and things, as some Jewish organizations have to do when they're having public events now?
Nope. We have a, we have a public Instagram. We put the location of the club. Every Wednesday, people know where it is. It goes on the announcements. We have no, we have no problem with that.
The second statistic makes a lot of sense because we have had a lot of those incidents.
What does that look like for some of our listeners who might not know?
I mean, there were, there's been lots of little ones. There was the one two years ago in the locker room.
Right, where just our listeners might not remember, this kid had somebody throw a Heil Hitler salute at them and they got charged and they pleaded guilty last summer.
Sometimes, like, you'll see the, the Jews and the Arabs, like, disagreeing, talking about it. Last year, there was a period where a bunch of Palestinian, like, hand-drawn Palestinian flags were thrown up around the school and, like, the Jews went around taking them down, and then they were taken down. And the school hasn't really done much about it. Last year, with our old principal, all he did in a student communication email, he, he suggested that people not use the, the phrase "from the river to the sea" because it's connotation. He did not ban the phrase, nor did he condemn it. He just suggested that people not use it. And he also established that people are, like, just allowed to do as they wish. He said, you know, you can wear kaffiyah, you can do whatever you want. Like, it really feels like he not only was, at least our previous principal, was not only not trying to stop kind of the, the express output of, of, like, the Palestinians, but really did support it.
Is there any other incidents you want us to know about?
Uh, I think this was last year. I recall going into the library, uh, just to study whatever. Um, and I noticed right next to me on the display of books that there were two books. One of them seemed to be about Israel, and one of them was clearly in support of Palestine. I picked up the book, I turned it over to read the back, and it wasn't just about, oh, how we grew up in this area and this area means a lot to us. It was clearly supporting that Palestine belongs to the Arabs and the Palestinians and that the Jews should not be there and they are colonizers. And so I went up to, I sent an email. And after that, the book was removed. But interestingly, it's very much a this or that with them because they took down both books. They took the Israeli book with it.
Um, and then have you heard about any of your friends who are being silenced for not bringing geopolitics into their classrooms in other schools?
The Jews at Canterbury have a much tougher time. This student was not, has not been able to go to class so much because of these Arabs who have bullied her and made it very difficult to go to that school. It's been a tough time and it's like, it's much worse. Canterbury is a lot of Palestinian supporters, a lot of Arabs, et cetera, et cetera. There's very, the JSU is very small. There's not so much support there.
I was told by several people that there are lots more JSU clubs, NCSY clubs now opening up in Catholic schools. And it's not just because it's more close for carpool or taking the bus, but for safety for Jewish students. Have you heard this?
So I'm actually not opposed to this. First of all, the Catholic school may be better than the public school for Jews. Yes, there's the, the religious studies, but usually in the later grades, those aren't mandatory. And simply, the, the Catholic schools don't hold the same liberal rhetoric and left-wing views. And so even if they're not directly in support of Israel, they're usually, they have less Muslim, because Muslims, why would they be going to Catholic school? And so generally, it, it can actually be safer. Now, Jews going to Catholic school, okay, like, kind of weird, but if you have the JSU, they're not forcing you to study Christian stuff, then I really see no harm. I have-
You don't personally know people that are doing it, right?
I, I have met certain people through NCSY events who go to there. I don't know, know them very well, but I do know vaguely of people who go to Catholic schools.
Ethan, did you know anybody who's doing this or thinking about it?
At the last small Shabbat town in Ottawa, quite a few people, a good, I think maybe even half of the Shabbat town had been people from Catholic school JSUs.
And you guys know about this, um, the censure of the antisemitic trustee. Do you feel qualified to say anything about this for, for our listeners? Or is this a good thing for the Jews? Is this bad for the community?
Like, it's, it's probably objectively good. I don't really know so much about the situation to say, but it's probably pretty much positive for the Jewish community.
Um, I've heard from others, and the student senator on student council is also Jewish, that the, um, kind of the voice in the board is really bad for the, in the, like, against the Jews. So this hopefully is good progress. Yeah.
I know this one!
What unusual character did Ross dress up as to teach his son about Panagon?
The Podolskis spent Wednesday lunch hour hanging out at the weekly JSU club meeting run by Rabbi David Rotenberg of the NCSY movement. He actually supervises clubs at 20 Ottawa-area schools and more and more, he says, in the Catholic system. We're speaking just hours after the Ottawa District School Board censured a trustee, having monitored the, the, the decision. Is it good for your community going forward or is it bad? You know, what does it mean?
You know, from, from my work directly with the students throughout the school board, it is rare that we see the direct and immediate impacts from what's going on at the, the highest levels of the board filtering down directly to the students. But obviously, anytime that you see that the higher-ups and the trustees and those involved in the bureaucratic part of the school board are coming around to realize that antisemitism is, is an issue and they are willing to, to say so, that is, we would hope, certainly a, a positive development within, within the board.
Okay, so tell us about what it's been like, in particular, this fall. Is this something that is now going to quiet down after, you know, the Remembrance Day's kind of over? But are there lots more things still percolating there that you have to solve?
The Remembrance Day issue is certainly one that is the most public and sort of the most, you know, some, something that people can point to and say, look, this, this is what we're dealing with. And if I could, I'd like to answer sort of in, in two directions. And, and one is that it is 100% true that our Jewish students throughout the school board and throughout the city are dealing with things that they shouldn't have to. And that's not only true of teens, that's true of, of many regular Jewish citizens who are being put on the spot to answer for what people who, in many cases, they want to, hold the first Jewish person that they see, you know, to account for what's going on in Israel according to their understanding. And we have, we have dealt with some pretty unfair and in some cases, traumatic incidents for Jewish teens in our Ottawa schools who have been bullied in person or online. At the same time, I don't want it to come across that the, the attitude and the atmosphere in the, in the public system is 1930s Germany. Um, and anytime there is an incident, even if it's not something that our students should have to deal with, um, we, we don't want the, the impression to be that, wow, we are inundated with antisemitism on, on a daily basis. And there are a lot of teachers and there are a lot of administrators who are allies or are would-be allies, who in some cases, they are doing everything that they can, and in some cases, they're not because they, in many cases, don't know what is the right thing. And so I think that we do need to, to just make sure that our, our reaction is balanced, that, that when there are things that need to be dealt with, we are approaching the teachers, we're approaching admin, we're asking for help if it needs to be escalated to, to the board leadership or to the police. In, in some cases, it does. We are doing so. And then at the same time, when, um, you know, when there is a, a misstep or something that needs to be dealt with, our, our reaction is balanced and, and proportionate, asking for the help, you know, without necessarily losing, losing perspective. Obviously, the recent Remembrance Day issue was a gross misstep. And I was invited in to speak with the admin about it because despite the fact that they were on the receiving end of everyone's, to put it frustration would be, to, to say frustration would be putting it very, very mildly, the response was quite extreme. Despite that extreme response, the admin asked me to come in because they wanted to know how they can best support the students who were feeling the effects and who were, you know, the ones that were obviously, um, at the very least frustrated.
What, so what did you, what day did you go and, and what's been done since?
My advice to, to the school was that with an incident like this, I don't think that the majority of the students were pained, were specifically harmed. It was more a matter of frustration, a matter of, here we go again. Here is a tone deaf incident that people don't understand why we are upset by these things and therefore they will keep happening. I would never defend that decision, but again, I don't think that the majority of the students were pained by it or, or scared to go to school. And so my advice to them and what I would love to see is that as transparent as they can be and as open as they can be to show the community that they do stand with us and what they are doing to deal with these incidents in the school. I, I think that there is an education piece and an action piece that if people saw steps being taken and shared with them, they might still say, we don't care, we, we've just had enough. But they might admit, at least the cooler heads would say, oh, this is not the same response that we've seen previously. Okay, we are dealing with allies who have made a mistake as opposed to, you know, we don't have any friends in, in, in the school, which is, I think, what, what people are, are quicker to, to say.
Okay. Thank you very much for being with us on the CJN Daily. Good to talk to you.
Thank you so much.
Since October 7th of last year, some 200 concerned Jewish families have joined the Jewish Parents of Ottawa Students Association, or JPOZA for short. It was their survey of Jewish students that we talked about with the twins. Stacy Friedhoff is a JPOZA organizer. She says her group is pleased with the school board's overall decision to censure the trustee. They're concerned the censored trustee still gets to continue her work shaping the board's equity policy, given her history of conduct violations. Stacy Friedhoff joins me from Ottawa. Before we go any further, maybe you can just explain, uh, what it is that has sort of been more of a flashpoint in the last couple of weeks, more so than, you know, before October 7th. What has changed? What has ramped up?
So, uh, you know, I, I would suggest that there have been issues, as you mentioned, since, uh, October 7th, but also predating it for many years. Um, so even back to, you know, the last war between Gaza and Israel in 2021, in the spring, our kids faced a slew of antisemitic, anti-Israel, anti-Zionist rhetoric from their peers. Uh, that was not addressed by our school board, who, by the way, continues, uh, and when I say our school board, we have four in Ottawa. The biggest one, um, and certainly the one that is most populated by the Jewish community is the OCDSB. And that school board currently is lacking an actual definition of antisemitism, uh, which is being brought up, uh, in a report to the board. Uh, and really, you know, that has been something we've been pushing for a very long time now. And in fact, our children have pushed for that at the school board for many years, asking for them to adopt the Ira definition, uh, which, as we know, is the most robust and most accurate. And we have been told, um, in no uncertain terms that our board will not, will not adopt Ira unless they are told to do so by the Ministry of Education.
Uh, our listeners may not remember, or they weren't listening at the time, but we had your daughter on, Talia, talking about people throwing pennies at Jewish kids and saying, go back to the gas chambers or which flavor of gas you would like. And I remember, I'll put the link to that interview in our show notes. This was, yeah, 2021. Um, and now it seems that it's not just the kids in her class or a few isolated Heil Hitler things, but there's a lot more happening. Maybe do you want to, uh, list a couple of the most upsetting ones to you as, as a parent?
You know, that's, that's a difficult one to choose, to be honest. We've had reports, so, you know, being, um, you know, I'm a member, of course, and on the leadership team of grassroots organization that popped up after October 7th, consequent to the onslaught of antisemitism that our students were facing. And we were hearing from a lot of parents and connecting. Uh, so the Jewish Parents of Ottawa Students Association, you know, the raison d'être is to be able to support our families, to share information, to advocate, uh, and to bring awareness to the community about what's actually happening in our kids' schools. So, you know, we've had reports of students where, uh, they've had Heil Hitlers. We've had students who are being told to choose a side, and if they, you know, dare to say that they stand with Israel, they will have rocks thrown at their heads. We've had incidents like that. We've had kids who have been threatened, harassed, uh, stu-, groups of students who are being, you know, harassing Jewish students and saying, you know, we're going to be waiting for you outside of school, where parents have had to make the decision whether or not it is safe, physically safe, to send their children to school on a daily basis. It's unacceptable.
And more so the bullying and the, like, peer-to-peer, what has happened in recent days, like Remembrance Day or walkouts, that has made this such a bigger issue now? That's not just, can be dealt with by disciplinary or suspensions?
Right. Well, and I think that you've sort of hit the nail on the head in that there are no disciplinary, uh, actions being taken. It seems that suspensions are something of the past. It's extremely difficult to have the school board take action. Um, and this is a systemic problem, right? So I want to be really clear that there's a trickle-down effect here. Students behave in a particular way, they behave in ways that they can get away with. If they're getting away with it, we have a systemic problem that the school board has not addressed, has failed in their duty to address. So you brought up Remembrance Day, my children, uh, two of my children attend SRB. And we had, uh, and I'll take a step back just to sort of note, uh, a group of Jewish parents from JPOZA met with the new principal, Aaron Hobbs, in September. You know, it was a gesture he actually put out to say he, you know, really does not have a lot of experience with Jewish families and understanding Judaism. And he wanted to understand more and wanted to offer an olive branch to learn more with us and to offer support to our families, understanding that our students had an extremely challenging year last year. Following that, you know, a month and some later, we have an incident where he is choosing to play an Arabic song that has been used, um, as a Gaza-related song of protest for the past several months that was put out after October 7th. And he chose to use that during a Remembrance Day assembly. Uh, in fact, there were three assemblies held that- Uh, in fact, there were three assemblies held that day and every single one, it was the same song that was played. There were no songs that are provided by the Legion, which we know, uh, we turn to. Uh, when we think about Remembrance Day, we follow the protocols that are provided by them. That was not done. Instead, it was Arabic music playing and the very first thought our kids had, and this was not just our Jewish kids, by the way, this is the majority of the students who do not speak Arabic in the school, let's not forget, because, uh, the languages that are spoken in our schools are English and French predominantly. Um, and, you know, much of the students were turning around and looking at each other and thinking, like, what is going on? What is happening? It was extreme.
Were you there too?
No, parents were not, uh, involved.
Okay, just curious, yeah. So this is your children were telling you this?
This is our, yes, our children who are sort of looking at each other very confused, wondering what is going on, not understanding the lyrics either, because of course they don't speak Arabic and questioning why the song is playing was really a slap in the face for our Jewish families.
Did the principal approve it or was like a lower down teacher?
So at this point, it's under investigation, to be honest, so I can't really speak to that. I don't know and I don't have the details and we probably won't for some time. What I would say is that, you know, the buck stops with the principal. So it was likely a teacher, that's what we believe, um, from what we have heard, but I can't say with any certainty who had suggested this particular song, but ultimately it was the principal who approved it and thought it was a good idea.
Wasn't there something else that two students were told they're talking to Zionists in the call, in the classroom and they were expelled? Is that true?
At this point, that is also being, is under investigation, so that is a member of our JPOZA community. Um, I I would sort of defer to that family to share their experience and their child's experience. From what we understand from the reports is that, um, what the family has shared is that their student and another Jewish student were speaking in the classroom about what was happening, um, abroad and were told, uh, that it was too Zionist and sent out into the hallway. You know, whether, you know, semantics or not, calling it an in-school suspension or simply getting sent out in the classroom. Um, but certainly there should be and ought to be an investigation into that teacher's behavior. And once more, we are seeing that there is a complete lack of education and understanding that is top down when you have a school board who has included geopolitics in their policies and singled out, singled out Israel and Palestine. And that is a school board policy that was released very quietly and snuck up on their website back in the spring of last year. We have a problem. We have a problem with geopolitics, you know, being brought into our schools without clear direction to our teaching staff, without understanding the implications and the repercussions on our students and our families and how this is in fact tearing our student body apart, not building bridges and bringing us together.
What was that policy?
So really, very, very specifically, when I say that it was very specifically around Middle Eastern conflict, I mean it. The words are there, Middle Eastern conflict. We're going to talk about, is it okay to wear Kaffiyahs? Is it okay to, um, have historical maps, and I quote historical, uh, on display? Is it okay to, um, use certain language, right? What is okay in terms of, you know, your expression of identity? So that is what the policy is about. It is the expression of identity policy that highlights the Middle Eastern conflict in spite of the fact that there are a great many identities out there that could have been discussed. But the fact that the school board has highlighted this, you know, even more, um, sows division between our students and in our schools.
Are parents pulling their kids out? Last year, we saw a lot of parents in our sort of listenership saying, I'm going to go to Jewish school. And I know the Jewish schools in our community here in Toronto where I live, they're, the JKs and SKs are bursting at the seams. Now they're opening new ones because kids' parents want them in a safe place.
Yes, the answer is yes, there has been an exodus, I would say, from the OCDSB. We have a number of families who have moved over to the French board, a number of families have actually moved over to the Catholic board, who, you know, I want to say that they have had a much better way of managing, um, sort of this idea of of zero tolerance when it comes to discrimination and behavior and the expectations of the students. Um, so they're doing something very right. It doesn't mean that antisemitism doesn't pop up, but certainly what we are hearing from many of our families who have moved to those schools is that their kids feel more connected, they feel safer, the geopolitics are not infiltrating their day to day lives in these schools. Um, there are of course outliers, right? But for the most part, that's where our families are going, which is frankly, extremely disconcerting.
So what do you want to happen now? What can be done?
I think we need the Minister of Education to step in and to make systematic changes to what is expected of school boards in terms of modicum of behavior, recognition of antisemitism, not just Holocaust education, but in a practical manner, addressing how school boards are dealing with this problem and the infiltration of geopolitics in their schools. And that is an ask that we have put before the minister with a large report that we submitted back in August, asking specifically for a ministerial review of the OCDSB.
Not heard anything?
Nope, not yet.
And that's what Jewish Canada sounds like for this episode of the CJN Daily, made possible in part thanks to the generous support of the Ira Gluskin and Maxine Granofsky Gluskin Charitable Foundation. Now Jewish leaders in Ottawa do remain troubled with one particular part of the Integrity Consultant's report. It said they couldn't rule on what antisemitism is because there's no agreed policy at the board level about what antisemitism is. And they pointed out that Jewish groups actually don't agree among themselves on a single definition of antisemitism. That prompted a stern letter from Deborah Lyons, Canada's antisemitism special envoy. She sent the school board a note saying, in not so many words, that's ridiculous. And she offered to share a copy of the government's new handbook on antisemitism. It just came out last month, we've reported on it. The school board, she said, doesn't need a separate definition of antisemitism since Ontario and most provinces and the Canadian government adopted the IRA one. Our show is produced by Zachary Judah Kaufman. Our executive producer is Michael Framan and our music is by Dove Beck Levine. Thanks for listening.